Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the November 1st, 2016 Vista Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Looney, will you lead us in the pledge?
Your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shirley, will you call the roll, please?
I will. Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
Commissioner Jackal.
Here.
Commissioner Rosler.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Student Commissioner Felix Agueda. And Student Commissioner Jonah Cranford. Thank you.
Welcome, glad to have you. Let's see, Commissioners, before you are the minutes from the October 18th meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made? If not, can we entertain a motion? Commissioner Jackal, please.
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Commissioner Carroll.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, we have a motion to accept and a second. May we vote? Let the record show that the minutes from the October 18th meeting passed unanimously as presented. Mr. Conley, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
No, Chairman, but I wanted to point out for the audience's sake that we did originally notice a project for a public hearing tonight. It's the Vista Palomar Project, proposed condominium and hotel development down on West San Marcos Boulevard. We had to delay the meeting and we canceled that item. It's been taken off the agenda. We sent a notice out as a courtesy to the folks that were originally sent notice of the cancellation, but just wanted to make sure that anyone that came tonight for that item knows it will be rescheduled at a later date and re-noticed.
Okay, so do we don't have a date yet set for that?
Not yet.
Okay, alright. So if there are anyone here that is, or anyone that is in the audience this evening that is here for the Palomar Project, that will be re-noticed and will meet again at a later date, the applicant wasn't quite ready for this evening. Okay, with that, are there anyone here that wishes to speak on anything that is not on this evening's agenda? I have no speaker slips. Okay, with that said, Commissioners, before we start on our early design review, are there any disclosures that need to be made? Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. So this issue that we're looking at tonight, Buena Vista Creek Apartments, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Vista Conservancy, and the Vista Conservancy owns property directly north of this project. The Conservancy is a nonprofit entity. I'm a volunteer, I don't take any money or salary, and I don't feel that the development decision, one way or the other, on the development of this project would affect me financially in any way, so I'm going to participate in the discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other disclosures? Seeing none, Mr. Conley, will you tell us what the process is for early design reviews and get us started, please?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Early design review is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to discuss the project with the applicant, review the initial plan that's been submitted, realizing that this is a preliminary proposal, it's just been submitted to the city for review, we haven't routed it through all of our departments and verified that it meets all of our zoning and engineering and land development standards. The opportunity tonight is to present the project upon initial submittal, provide the opportunity for the public to have some input, provide an opportunity for the Commission to provide some commentary to the applicant and let them ask questions back and forth. There's no formal action taken tonight, the formal action will come at a later date following the Planning Department's review of the application and a formal public hearing. So with that, the subject project tonight is Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park, property at 751 East Vista Way, a proposal by Monarch to develop the site with 200, I'm sorry, that's a typo, it should say 179, my apologies, apartments on 8.26 acres, 14 three-story buildings, a one-story rec center and community building, a public trail along Buena Vista Creek, and a portion of the site would be reserved for a future flood control basin. Development agreement was approved for this property by the City Council on November 10th of last year, and that called for the development of the property by Monarch to negotiate, I'm sorry, the terms of development agreement were to negotiate the purchase of the property. It's contingent upon the processing of the site development plan for development of the site, so the next step in the process is what we're going through with them now. The property is shown here on the right, it's located at 751 East Vista Way, it's shown with the yellow, or the yellow dotted line around the property. It's currently two legal lots, which is shown here with the yellow line, the northerly and southerly parcel. These properties were purchased by the city around 1990 for the purpose of rent control when the Mobile Home Park was originally operating. The park was closed around 2003 and all the residents were relocated, and the city's been working on trying to find a developer for the property since. The Housing Commission owns the property, so upon development of the, upon approval of development of the property, the sale proceeds would go to the Housing Commission. The project area is 13.4 acres overall, there is an 8.26 acre project site that's carved out of that, which we'll cover in the presentation, and there's a 5.16 acre remaining lot, which would be the city's parcel upon which the future detention basin would be built. Surrounding land uses are shown here, commercial primarily to the west and north, a single-family residential development up the hill to the east, multifamily residential just south of that, Wildwood Park and the Adobe on the southerly boundary of the property. Access is from East Vista Way and is proposed via Townsite Drive, and most importantly, Buena Vista Creek skirts the westerly boundary of the site. The property is designated mixed-use in our general plan, it's shown with the purple designation here, an open space area covers the creek that travels across the westerly portion of the site. The mixed-use designation allows commercial and residential with a maximum density of 40 units to the acre. This property is located within the downtown specific plan, in the Civic Center District, which is the purple area, up in the upper right-hand corner of the specific plan, the property is surrounded in red here. The purple designates the mixed-use portion of the site, which is the southerly portion, and the green designates an open space area, which would be over the future detention basin. The mixed-use designation, as I mentioned, allows a maximum density of 40 units to the acre. I was going to get into a detailed presentation on the project design, but the applicant, after looking at their presentation, covers all of that very thoroughly, so at this point I'm going to hand it off to them, if that's okay with the Commission, and let them cover the site design elements.
That will be just fine. I'm assuming that Rod Stone is going to be the presenter?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stone, give your name and address and...
My name is Rod Stone. I'm a designer. San Diego. Monarch, I'm one of the partners of Monarch Group. Monarch Group has been in existence for over 40 years. We have built over 11,000 units on 50 projects, so we don't build that many projects, but when we do, we're hands-on. We are the, we work with the designer, we do the developing ourself, the construction ourself, managing and ownership. Typically, we keep our projects for as long as we possibly can. We look forward, because we have been working with Vista for many years, approximately a decade ago, we built the project, Monarch, at Shadow Ridge, which is 315 units. We think, at the time that we built the project, we increased the bar in North County, let alone in just in Vista, and we know that there are many people that point to our project as being one of the more adequate, capable, and award-winning kind of a project, and that's kind of the bar that we're trying to create also in the site that we're talking about today. The site is, I think, one of the most remarkable sites in the city of Vista, and we're planning on developing that site along the stream that flows on one side of it, to, we also get to the remarkable kind of development that we typically create in all of the projects that we have. We are working closely with your staff, with John, and we think we've created a site plan that works for everybody and one that I think everybody is going to be proud of. So we also have with us Ann Gunter from the Lightfoot Planning Group that will explain in more detail, and also our architect is here to go through the details of the architecture and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ann Gunter, I'm with the Lightfoot Planning Group with offices in Carlsbad, and I'm going to try to do this presentation in less time than John thinks it's going to take me. As John mentioned, this property is in the core of Vista along the creek, and the majority of the site is a large level pad where the former mobile homes were located. I included a couple of site photos here. Oh. Okay, sorry, it's, okay. If you haven't been on the site recently, this is what it looks like. These are the former mobile home park pads, there's some remnant trees that are remaining, and then the eastern side of the site has a large slope up to the existing single-family The vehicular access to the site originally was provided through the little parking lot area off of East Vista Way. There was a bridge across the creek that remains, it's now fenced, and that bridge will remain with the new project, but it will be left as a pedestrian-only bridge, it will not be used for vehicular access. The new access point will come from Townsite Drive at the end of that cul-de-sac. There will be a new creek crossing that is constructed and associated with the project, and that creek crossing was also designed to accommodate the detention basin and the flows associated with that basin. We worked really closely with the hydrologist and the engineers to make sure that that crossing was designed appropriately. As John mentioned, the property is currently owned by the Housing Commission, it has a total of 13.4 acres, and the area that is shown in yellow are the properties that would be sold for the residential development. So that includes the main development site where the main buildings are going, as well as the little current parking lot area that comes off of East Vista Way, which will still be retained for parking, be redeveloped and restriped, but it will still be parking. And then that pedestrian bridge will connect across to the residential parcel. The areas shown in blue is the area that's going to be retained by the city, and on the right-hand side you can see the future detention basin area, and then the creek area itself, it's actually a widened section of creek, will also be retained by the city. That blue area goes up to the top of the slope for the creek, and I'll go into that a little bit more in a moment, and then the access from Townsite Drive, the city actually has existing easements to build that entryway. Much of this mobile home park property, or former mobile home park property, is in the floodplain of the creek, and so it's necessary to raise the elevation for those structures out of the floodplain. And the way that's being proposed to be accomplished is that there'll be some excavation from the existing top of slope of the creek to widen that creek channel, and there's also excavation for that future detention basin, using the city's detention basin design, but that excavation will create the cut that will then be used for fill on the site, and the idea is that'll be a balanced grading operation within the property. The stormwater plan for the site is outside of my area of expertise, but it does include some pretreatment to reduce the sediment load, it will have some water quality and filtration, so that before any water coming from the development pad is released to the creek, it's been through cleaning and stormwater treatment. This is what the existing creek section looks like through the property, it's pretty steeply incised. There are a few very nice mature trees within the creek section that we're proposing to retain onsite, but a lot of the creek area is filled with invasives and just weedy species. This cross-section shows, this is kind of a generic proposal, this isn't, this is at one point on the creek, but this is generally the concept. So going from left to right, up to where that existing grade line comes in, that's the existing steep channel that's in there. The yellow line represents the existing grade, and you can see the top of where the mobile home park pad is today. There'll be some excavation at the top of that, outside of the wetland area of the creek, and then the slope will be laid back more gently and revegetated with native plants. There'll be a section, a level area for the trail with additional slope above that trail, again, to kind of give it some separation and to give that trail a little sense of being in the outdoors, and then that leads to the top of the slope where the new residential areas will be. And then this shows just a little bit on the plan, the blue area is the existing limits of that creek channel, so where the blue area stops, that's the top pad. The green represents the additional width for the creek area and the trail located within that green area. I know there was a question that was raised, the Conservancy trail is shown on the very right-hand side of that edge, and we have shown a dashed connection for that trail. The project plans show a formal constructed trail to the left of the Townsite Drive entry. The area to the east of Townsite Drive is part of the city's detention basin process, and we don't know what the timing is on that. We were envisioning that that would be an informal connection, because that area will be graded with the project. In addition to the trail itself, which obviously provides for some nice outdoor activity, there are a lot of pedestrian linkages within the property itself, so that all of the buildings are linked to the recreation areas, there are points of connection to the trail, there's a connection across to that parking lot area, and also out to East Vista Way, which is where the bus route service is right now. We worked with the Fire Department in some of the early design to make sure that the internal street system had all the linkages that they want, so that they could get access to all of the buildings, and there's also a proposed emergency access at the very southern end of the site, which is on the left side of this property. That required an easement through the adjacent commercial property, which has been negotiated with them, that will be gated, it will be solely for emergency purposes, and then all of the vehicular access for the residents would be through the Townsite Drive access, which obviously was selected because that has an existing signalized intersection at East Vista Way. As John mentioned, there's 179 total units proposed, that's a density of about 21.7 units per the acre, well below the 40 that's allowed, and that is based just on the residential lot areas that were shown, those yellow areas that I showed on the map. It is not the gross area of the site, it's only based on what's being purchased for the residential. The building height maximum that's allowed in the downtown plan is 60 feet, and what is proposed with these units, they're three-story units with a max height of about 37 and 1/2 The project also provides substantially more landscaping, common open space, private usable open space on balconies and patios than is required by the downtown plan. And the final kind of unit issue is that there, this project will be providing for affordable housing on the site. The DDA requires 6% of these units to be affordable to lower income, and that translates to 11 units, and then that's proportional based on the unit mix. So there'll be one, two, and three-bedroom units that are at that affordable rate, and all the design, development standards, parking requirements are the same for all units, there's no difference between the standard units and the affordable units. I wanted to briefly review the parking. The required parking from the downtown specific plan would require 350 spaces, and that chart shows the parking spaces per unit with guests at .25 per unit, and the lower table shows how that's being provided on the site. These buildings are designed to have a single attach, a single garage space for each unit, so every resident would get one garage space, and then there would be additional open spaces. There's 140 open spaces, or 26 spaces in that lot across, off Vista Way that's across the bridge, and then six handicap spaces, so there's a total of 351 spaces proposed. One of the really nice features in Monarch projects is that, is their focus on a central activity area, common use areas, and this common area on this project is located right near the project entry, it's adjacent to the creek. You can see on here we've labeled the clubhouse and the exercise building, but what that does is it forms a really, a really special gathering place for all of the residents for their common activities. What I've got here is a whole series of photos, and I'm going to go through these quickly. These are from some recent Monarch projects in Point Loma, West Hollywood, and a couple of others in San Diego, and the architecture and interior design style is going to be a little different for this Vista project, but this is representative of the quality and the amenities that would be included. Leasing offices, conference room, a gathering room with great rooms for residents. They incorporated teaching kitchen into their clubhouses so that they can have cooking classes and activities, game rooms, theaters, I don't know where I am. Oh, exercise rooms, those were fast, those look like gymnasiums. Then outdoors, there's the pool complex, there's a resident garden that's been incorporated into this design, a tot lot, a bocce ball court, some outdoor seating areas, and there's a resident dog park there. And again, this is illustrative of some of the amenities in some of their other projects. I know when I lived in apartments, I would have liked to have had a pet wash for my dog. Overall, this community is designed to provide a quality, attractive homes in this downtown area. It's within walking distance to the bus routes, which links to the transit center. It's nearby with commercial, recreation, restaurants, all the things that are wonderful about Vista's downtown these days. The project is designed to implement the downtown plan guidelines and to bring the public trail and enhancement to the creek, which I think is really an important part for this project. I'm going to ask our project architect to come up and review the design of that, but we would certainly appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to your input.
Thank you. Carlos? Carlos Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Carlos Rodriguez, I'm with Rodriguez Associates, 480 Center Street in San Diego, and, let's see if I can get the right button here. Good, okay. This is, Ann did a great job explaining the Village Center that we have envisioned for this site, and it truly is the center for this community, and the, the main building for that is our clubhouse building. You can see it in the exterior elevation that we, on the top of the sheet here, and similar to one of the photographs you just recently saw, we have a custom arched entry door, and, and we, you'll see this throughout the site, is we try to break up the architectural massing, so that everything looks like, more like a collection of homes or a collection of buildings. So here, for example, we've broken up the roof lines quite a bit and highlighted some of the featured windows and, of course, the entry. And the image down below is similar to the clubhouse, the exercise building, again, you see a veranda or a trellis entrance off to the side, and then arch windows, which are a signature of this project. It's Mediterranean in style, I don't like saying that, I consider it more California style. I think we, we've kind of evolved this style enough that I think we can own it now. The maintenance building, which is next to that, is, again, picks up a lot of that, the California style. The arch windows, the barrel roofs are going to be featured in this project. This, the next slide here is the apartment buildings, and again, as Ann mentioned, they're three stories in height, but we went through great efforts to break up the facade. This, for example, is, you're seeing an elevation here that you actually wouldn't experience that much as you drive through the main drive of the site. It's the courtyard, motor court areas where the garages would be, but again, we see these as very important elevations, so we, we went through great pains to articulate the upper floors and also the garage level, similar to what we did on the other elevation. So you see balconies that overlook the motor court areas, bedroom windows, living spaces, a lot of eyes and ears in the courtyard areas, whether they're pedestrian courtyards or motor court areas. This is a project we just completed with the Monarch Group in Point Loma. It's, it's more of an Irving Gill design, but a lot of the principles that we're using on this site, we also used in the design of this project. You see the custom entry to the clubhouse, and you also notice how we broke up the facade on, on this particular design as well. This is a good example of that, this is a twilight shot, but it kind of highlights how we articulate the ins and outs of the facade, and what we're proposing here in Buena Vista is similar. This is another project, a Monarch project, again, the attention to detail around windows and fenestrations, the combination of arched openings, as well as the chimney elements, in this case, different textures with stone and stucco. So that's the attention to detail that we're proposing on this site in Buena Vista. There we go. This is an example of the pool area, and we see that as a very important part, so when we do our site planning, land planning around these amenities, we make sure that the clubhouse obviously is part of that, but there's connections to the apartments as well, so that the apartments have that visual connection to these outdoor spaces. I believe strongly that you can create vistas inside a development, as well as taking advantage of the natural vistas that you have out, for example, in this case, it'd be the creek. Okay, here's another example of what I was just talking about, where we have the apartment buildings around an amenity like a pool, and take advantage of that vista, and of course, you can see the attention that the Monarch Group gives to the pool area, there's multiple places for gatherings and meetings and lounging, and also private cabanas in this case. This is a typical interior, it's a bedroom, walk-in closet, you can see off to the side, and a bay window. I'll flip through these quickly, but again, you can see the attention to detail, these are high-end apartments with good detailing in terms of the floor finishes and the countertops, even the stackable washer and dryers are full-size stackable washer and dryer where we need that. washer and dryer, where we need that. And some, in most cases, we try to get side-by-side appliances. Here's an example of a living space, open plan. You can see the dining room by the bay window way off in the distance. But again, the kitchen is open to the living room. You have the pass-through feature at the kitchen toward the living spaces. So it gives it a sense of, of a larger space. The kitchen, again, same concept, but looking at it from the kitchen's point of view, looking back into the living space. And again, a different iteration of that concept here. And these are elevations which we just talked about recently. All right. So I'm available to answer any questions you might have, and thank you very much.
All right. Commissioners, we're going to go ahead and, and get comments from the, the members that are here to speak, and then we'll ask our questions and give our opinions. And then the applicant will come back to address their questions as well as ours. Does Brooks Kavanaugh, please. Good evening. State your name, give your address.
Yes, my name is Brooks Kavanaugh. I'm a land use consultant, a member of the Vista Conservancy. My address is 777 West Vista Way, Vista, California. And I see some new faces here. This is great. Good opportunity. We've kind of laid this out in this fashion. Board Chairman, President is handing out to you our brochure. In the brochure is the map of the trail that we've managed for 16 years. I'm going to give you a little history quickly of the Conservancy. We're not new on the spot here. Some of you have even assisted us and worked in the, on the trail during cleanups, and, and we so appreciate that. But this is an important piece of property in, in our city, and has, has some history. Goes back to the formation and the incorporation, and also the finding of water in the community. I have personal comments. I'm going to keep out of this. I'm not here as a director and the treasurer and a founding father of the Vista Conservancy to give you an opinion in favor or oppose. We strictly are here because we're resource managers. We've worked on this property with the City of Vista since probably '06. The city gave the Conservancy the opportunity to come in onto the 13 acres and preserve some of the walking paths, put in fencing, a gate, and protect the asset until whenever it is developed. We even have a, a storage container on that property, where we keep our tools for the yearly, hopefully twice-a-year cleanup. But anyway, the point is that we know this property well, and it adjoins our three acres. So if you go north on this map, north along the creek, you'll find that the Vista Conservancy owns that property as a result of working with a developer of Creekside Development. You see Creekside on some of the roads right on, on the map. And we've managed that trail and, and had a lot of fun on it and got our share of poison oak and a few other scars. But the fact is that through community participation, volunteers, we've been the managers and the workers. Now, I would say to you, we were not invited. The Vista Conservancy was not invited to give any input on this project. We found out about it through John Conley and the staff. And you have a letter with some questions on it, which was created and submitted, which we generally have answers to. I'm not here to discuss that this evening. I might bring one item to your attention, or you might want to ask us about, what did you mean by this statement? But I believe there's, there's about 11 comments on there. We met with Mr. Conley last Friday, and I think those things can be resolved. My, my concern is the available parking at the access point that we call 751. That's going to be shared with the public and occupants. Will there be enough? There's another comment that we didn't put on, you know, we, we may have highlighted it, but, you know, just for discussion purposes. So, we're a 501(c)(3) organization formed in 1999. We've built trails, we've managed trails, and we are encouraged that there will be a trail through this project. But we, we are also concerned as to who will manage it, keep it, and be responsible for the policing thereof. Some things that we've learned over time is it's nice to have a trail, but it's wonderful to have surveillance and participation from the public in keeping it clean and open. I can tell you, there's days I've been there in the last 15, 16 years that I've seen a group of, if you counted them, 100 people walk through the trail on a weekend. Not as an organized group, just individually. It gets quite a use, and it'll get quite a use with the advent of this project, if, if this project goes forward. So, we're not, we're not here defending the plan or faulting it. But I think what we'd like to do is continue to be part of the planning process as it relates to that corridor called the stream, and the trail adjacent there, too. My opinion, it's, it's narrow. And you can get a feel for that. I don't know how many of you commissioners have walked the trail, but go to the new section that goes from where we built up to Bel Air and walk on over along the trail that leads to Ponderosa Drive. Portions of that are only eight foot wide and what, and have been a little difficult to maintain. So that narrowness, the steepness of the bank, the setback, those are all important things. And those all go along single-family homes, where some of the owners have access, and we know them. I, I think probably at this point, there's a lot that can be said. Are there questions that I, as one of the directors, and by the way, there are three other Conservancy directors, I'm not sure they put Slips in. One of the founding fathers you're going to hear from is David Larkin, local attorney. We were there and received the asset, and, and he put together the incorporation. And with that, I have no more to say, just to answer questions, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. David Larkin, please.
John, would you put the, up on the screen here? My name is David Larkin. I practice law here. I'm a civil engineer by background. Lived in Vista since 1949. I'm intimately familiar with this corridor, as I used to run my ducks from Hillside Terrace down across East Vista Way and run them up the creek through the Sycamore, before it was the Sycamore Creek. I haven't had much time to look at this plan, but there are some things that really concern me that jump out. Number one is the location of the Celtation Basin. We have a Celtation Basin at Bringle Terrace Park, which is rarely even used or consumed. So you have the Celtation Basin at the upstream end of this project. It really should be at the downstream end. And it should be used not only as a Celtation Basin, but it should be used to collect the water that comes off these impervious structures, of which there are many, and make a feature that would blend in with Wildwood Park and the Rancho Buena Vista. You've got this development packed right up against the Rancho Buena Vista, a very unique asset of this town. I have some real problems with this overall design. I have some problems with the density. I mean, you're talking about, it's only 21-some units per acre of the yellow area. However, it's too much for this unique area. The first speaker for Monarch hit it on the nose when he said, "This is a very unique piece of property." It to Vista is like Half Dome is to Yosemite. And we need to pay attention to that, because once you mar it, it's gone forever. Now, I'm not saying we should trash this development, but I'm saying we really need to be sensitive to the uniqueness of this piece of property. This creek runs all year round. This is Southern California. We don't have many creeks that run all year round. I also see some very difficult engineering problems. We built a building upstream from this, and we hit water at three feet. And we had to undercut significantly and backfill with boulders and so forth, just to get the foundations. And we're, we're just a two, two-story structure. So I'm going to need some time to really look at this. If the developer is interested in working with me in a positive way, that might be better than me coming back and fighting this project. But too much density, the location at the downstream end, next to the Rancho Buena Vista and Wildwood Park is not sensitive. Put your Celtation Basin downstream where it, you know, from a gravity standpoint, makes more sense. And you could even make a pond out of it, make it a recreational feature. Anyway, I don't want to say anymore. I'm going to study the plan. I'm available. I live here in Vista. We can do a lot better than this.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. A couple of quick points. I'm not in favor against this. It looks like a pretty decent design to me. But I would have to agree with Mr. Larkin in his half dome analogy. This is really a, one of the very few gems left in, in Vista that's undeveloped. It's secluded from the surrounding area to a large extent, so it's quiet back there. You have the creek right there, and it's just waiting to be developed to just a masterpiece, and I hope that the developer does that. I would also encourage that flood basin to be turned into some sort of recreation area. You know, if you can put playgrounds at the bottom, because it doesn't rain a lot around here, or you turn it into a pond or something like that, whatever can be done to take advantage of that piece of, of property instead of letting it just go to waste there, growing The other part here that I'm not sure if it's the city or the developer can help, but that whole west side of this property butts up against some pretty nasty-looking commercial buildings. I, I use that park, run it, walk it, and I would encourage that, that be part of the discussion. How are we going to, either through code enforcement or some sort of fencing, block out that ugliness from the other beauty that is already there? I noticed only one entrance and exit, I believe. That seems kind of challenging to me. I would encourage a traffic circle as opposed to a, a traffic light there at the entrance to the facility. And the walking path, bike path perhaps, running path, I like the larger areas of the path that the Conservancy put in place. There's a lot of people that use that path, or use that park right now as a, just a vacant lot. There's a lot of room to walk back and forth. But I would encourage that that path be at least 12 to 15 foot wide, so you can have breast-to-breast, two-way traffic all the way through to Wildwood Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have no other speaker. Slips. Commissioners, I think we'll use, because I forgot my original notes, we're going to use Ms. Jackel's layout. So the first topic that we'll discuss will be site design, grading, and topography. Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. So, Mr. Conley, maybe you could add a little more information for us regarding the detention basin, its needs, its timing, any, anything in conjunction with that detention basin regarding the trail connection, that type of info?
Sure. So the detention basin, in concept, came up a few years ago when we were updating our flood zone maps for the downtown. We had a hydrologist, Tori Walker and Associates, who's here in Vista, evaluate the flood zone throughout Buena Vista Creek to determine, you know, where we had flooding issues and what the existing basins do for us. So the basin that was built upstream at Bringle Terrace Park was intended to solve that flood problem throughout the creek downstream. Unfortunately, it doesn't solve the problem in downtown, in the historic part of downtown, west of the middle school, down through the Vista Village project, there's still a flood zone. So there's a need identified for detention basin to take that area out of the flood zone. This is one of the last remaining properties that we really have that opportunity to do it in. So in negotiations for the development agreement for this property with Monarch, we included that as a planned improvement. As far as the timing of it, it would most likely follow the development of this project. The city, while we have it as a plan and have it in our capital improvement program, don't have funding for it right now. And so we envision it could be, you know, three to five years maybe before we construct it. If we're lucky enough to assemble the money we need in a shorter timeframe, then it could be built sooner. But we don't have an adopted schedule for it at this point. So with respect to the trail that goes through there, I, I know they mentioned it's not shown on the plan. It would be a graded finished area that people could certainly walk across. But in terms of the trail construction, I think we still need to look at whether or not it makes sense to build the trail through there now, or reserve it for completion of the detention basin. You know, if we need to get through there for construction, we don't want to just tear it up again. The reason the detention basin is located in that side of the property is that we need to use the bridge that accesses the property from Townsite Drive, which would be right here, as a flood control measure, so that that would be the actual flood detention structure, that once the flood levels got to the level of the bridge, it would be pushed into the detention basin. So you have to have a structural improvement of some kind in the creek to allow for that flood overflow. So that's why it was located there, because we could take advantage of the bridge. In the southerly portion, you have to take the creek offline and put it back online, and it doesn't really work as well from an engineering perspective. I don't know what else you'd like me to?
That's great. Thank you for that information. I appreciate it. And it sounded like, from the applicant's presentation, that this basin would be rough-graded with their development based on the need for more soil for their fill. So it sounded like it would be at least roughed out with the project.
The intent at this point is that the, the hole would be dug as part of their grading program to, yeah, to level the site.
As far as the mechanics of, of taking creek water offline, that would come later with the CIP?
Correct. So the excavation area that's shown on their site plan would just be that. It would be a hole basically, until we would, with, with a pipe outlet to the creek, until we were able to-
Does that need to be online before this area is out of the flood, flood plain for occupancy?
No, that would be resolved as part of their grading plan, and they have to process a Loma to do that.
Okay, they're going to raise it. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll yield my, any other site design grading comments to some other Commissioners right now.
Commissioner Rosler.
That answered a number of my questions, but I, I, I think I'd like Anne to come back up. I have a couple of questions about the site design, if you're the appropriate person Hi.
Hi.
Lot two, where the, the pedestrian bridge goes across, is that parking going to be open to the public for use, to use the trail? is that parking going to be open to the public for use, to use the trail?
We have not had that resolved with staff at this point, so it's...
Open for discussion?
It's open for discussion, I think, yeah.
Okay, all right. I noticed in the site plan that most, all of the trash enclosures, except one, are located on the east side of Drive A. I'm a little concerned that, for the units that back up onto the creek, that that's a little far away to haul your trash. So I'd be interested in why you, or why that was designed that way. Keeping smelling trash enclosures away from units is, I think, a good thing, but I think this may be a problem. I'm concerned about the speed on Drive A. You've got two 13-foot-wide travel lanes that go the entire length of the project. I'm a little concerned about speeds. I was wondering, did you take a look at that? And were there any traffic calming devices other than speed bumps that were considered?
And I don't have the plan in front of me. Are you talking about at the entry or all the way through the property?
All the way through. There's a particularly long stretch by Buildings Eight and Ten. And I just thought that with that wide of a street, that speed might be, become an issue.
All good comments. We can take a look at that.
Okay, very good. The three-bedroom units are all in the Building Type One, and those are located basically along the creek. I love the recreation facility. I mean, you've got a lot of amenities there, really good stuff. You do have one area on the south end that is, I believe, reserved for a barbecue area. My concern is, here's my concern. They're three-bedroom units. I think they're going to be kids. It'd be nice to, either one, see all the Building Type Ones located closer to the recreation facility, or there'd be an additional recreation facility to the south for the kids that are going to be down there. So... We were having to just, well, I was looking at the tentative map, and it's pretty clear on the northern portion of the east side that there's off-site slopes and the adjacent single-family neighborhoods are above. On the southern portion of that area, it's not as clear. And I think some cross-sections through there, up to the existing units on the south side, would help us understand the elevation of the buildings and the elevation of these existing structures. Got that one? Okay, I'm going to stop talking and let the other Commissioners... I have some additional questions, but for other members of your team, so...
Thank you, I appreciate the input.
Commissioner Looney?
Ann, I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
One is, the development of the trail and the grading relative to the existing concrete swale that's along that west property boundary. So you've got the buildings, you have the existing structures, then you have a fence that apparently is on the property line, then you've got the concrete swale, and then we've got the creek. So does any of your development include the area up to that existing fence line?
The area, are you talking about the area on the west side of the creek, adjacent to the commercial buildings?
Yes.
Yeah, this project does not touch the west side of the creek. All of the work on the creek, the widening, you've got that existing commercial, their edge conditions and fence, a steep slope down to the bottom of the creek, which is where the wetland is, then that comes up on the east side. And from that point is where we would be doing the creek widening, but not touching the west side of the creek.
So, John, what happens to that part of the creek, to that side of the creek? Because there's a lot of erosion, there's a lot of debris, there's a lot of homeless camps on that side. So how is that going to be addressed when the property is developed, or is it?
So that part of the creek is on adjacent private property, not on the city's property. So it would be, at best, a code enforcement effort if those issues continue. But it won't be developed or changed, I guess, much from the existing condition with the development of this project, the west side of the creek.
Okay. Another question, Ann. From some of the grades that I've seen, are we raising that pad elevation 15 to 20 feet on average? I see the flow line of the creek at about 346. That's in the middle of the property. And then I see the building pad, or what appears to be an existing grade elevation in the finer print or the finer font, at about three, in the mid 350s.
So that's a tough question to answer, because it varies all over the map. Literally all over the map. There are some areas where, like, as you get closer to the existing hillside, you've got areas where the grade is almost, it's like a foot or two difference in terms of fill, and there's areas where it's larger. And just as an example, at Building One, there's an existing grade elevation of about 355.
Yes.
And the pad grade would be at 360. So that's about five feet at that end.
I think what would be helpful, at least for me, is on the next submittal, to have some site sections, maybe three or four site sections through this so we can get an idea of how high you're going to have to raise that pad to get out of that flood plain. And then are we going a foot above that flood plain? Or are we going five feet? Or are we trying to get more of a balanced grade where we're excavating the basin and distributing that dirt, you know, that soil on top of the existing pad?
It will be a minimum of one foot above the grade, but I understand that having some sections and showing exactly how that existing grade relates to the finished grade proposal, and we'll do those sections through the site.
Okay, thank you. John, another question for you. Couple of questions. When the development approval was given by City Council, was the density then kind of negotiated in with this basin being developed?
It wasn't, I've got it here, but the intent was to allow for a 179-unit project. So that was specified in the development agreement in terms of the overall density. It didn't go beyond that in terms of a number. But if you calculate out the acreage, that was what was assumed.
Okay. Then just some clarity for me. On the title of the project, we have condominium housing permit to develop apartment units. Now condominium means, in my definition, understanding, is ownership of the airspace between the walls.
Right.
Apartments, someone owns everything and rents it out to tenants. So are we using condos or are we building apartments?
Building apartments, but the applicant has requested the condo map as a option in the future. If they don't record the condo permit and the map along with the entitlement, it's much more difficult to convert it in the future. But if it's recorded as part of the project, they have the option in the future to sell the units as condos if so desired.
Okay. Thank you for both of your answers.
Mr. Conley, was the titling done the same with the Monarch Apartments that were built?
Yes, although they did adopt the map and the condo permit for that project after their entitlements later. But they have the same arrangement for the Thibodeau project, although they still operate as an apartment.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Jackel, please.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow Commissioners about the trash enclosures and the need for another amenity for children at the south end. That's a long hike up to the north end if you're down on the south end. So we need another totlot or something. And I also wonder about, for slightly older children, a basketball, not a court. What am I trying to say, a basketball?
Have a court?
Court, okay. Because they're going to need a place to be also. Okay. Mr. Conley, is this then another 100% residential mixed-use project?
Yes.
If it were a regular residential project, how many units would be allowed?
I'm not sure I understand your question. So the residential zoning determines what the density that would be allowed. So if it were zoned residential on the citywide code, the maximum density that we allow is 21 to the acre, so they're just slightly above what the citywide maximum, if it was not in the mixed-use zone.
All right, thank you. Didn't know the right way to say that. And with the mixed-use zone, has the parking requirement been dampened down any?
The parking requirement is per the downtown-specific plan, so no, we have not changed that since it was last updated in 2015.
All right. For a future presentation, I would really like to have a visual of the comparable heights of the proposed buildings with the heights of the surrounding buildings, just so we get a better idea of how this is going to fit. And I'd also like, if possible, to have some kind of perspective view of the project as seen from east Vista Way. Again, I just need to kind of be able to visually put it in place in my mind. And that's all I need right now, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, please.
Just a quick update. With the changing of the height of the land, how does that relate to the property behind, the residential property? Is it still below their ground level?
In terms of what it would be at the completion of development, yes. The building roof lines would still be below the pad elevations of the homes above by approximately 15 to 20 feet.
So they'd be looking down at the roofs?
Correct.
Second question relates to the basin being where it is and all the amenities on that end, similar kind of concern. But my concern would be, what about the sidewalks? The pedestrian from one end, which is the west end, all the way down to the other end? I'd be concerned about whether there's adequate sidewalks.
Within the project, you mean?
Within the project.
So I believe, Ms. Chow, there's a site plan exhibit that showed the pedestrian connections in the applicant's presentation. There, thank you. So you note the pedestrian access is shown with the bright yellow lines there throughout the project. That's where the sidewalks would be located.
So somebody on the west side would have plenty of access through those sidewalks and also in between the building and the amenities. That would be a concern, as long as those are there.
Yeah, so there's connections across the project along the creek side. You can see there that are continuous, as well as around the amenity area there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rosler, please.
I have a question for either Mr. Kavanaugh or Mr. Larkin.
We haven't rehearsed our choreography, so you're going to see...
I'm sorry to... In your exhibit here that's in the pamphlet, is this conceptual or just showing points of location? Or were you specific, especially on the property, locating the trail on this plan on the right-hand side of the property instead of along the creek?
This is reasonably accurate. I think I drew it.
Okay. I wouldn't expect anything other...
What it is now, across the Mobile Home Park, you could use two, you know, there's two paved areas. But once you get up to, right under where it's viewed, that's joints are, the developer built, that is right against the edge of the slope. Very accurate, all the way through, crosses it ponderosa.
I, with the proposal, that's going to be a driveway now. And they're proposing to move that trail adjacent to the creek, which seems to me to be a continuation of the great work you guys have already done. And I just wanted to know, is that going to be an issue with you in the design of the project?
I think we need to see a little more explanation.
Okay.
You're talking about the orange line.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's a question we raised when we got the plan. Gee, how do you get, you know, this thing's going to be shut down. Our trail's going to be impacted for how many months while construction occurs? How will, and the first question is, how do you service? We don't want a dead-end trail 1,500 feet from Bellard Drive, for example.
Make the connections.
That wouldn't be good.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and just a comment here. What we've always wanted to do is to connect Bringle Terrace Park with the downtown area and to make that a very pleasant experience. And that's something that Vista has that's very unique. And it's the creek that makes it unique.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Conley, going back to Commissioner Garretson's question regarding pad height, roof line, you said 15, 20 feet at both ends? I mean, this, the...
Well, you can note by the exhibit here that the homes and the apartments really only have a visual issue right here on the northern portion. These are all multifamily apartment homes above that are at a slightly lower elevation, but there's, we looked at the elevations up here for that 15 to 20-foot separation. That's from the single-family pads, not from the apartments. I didn't do the evaluation of that.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you. Commissioner Looney, please.
Brooks, I have another question for you, if you wouldn't mind. And again, just referring back to your diagram here. Are you, would the conservatory be opposed to moving your path, which is well on the inside of the property, over? Because right now, your diagram shows that path coming through here.
Well, one of them, no, that's the upper two.
Brooks, can we get you on the microphone?
I'm sorry.
That's what we consider now the upper level outside our fence area. Our walking area is more where the center driveway is.
So in through here?
Check.
So would you be opposed to moving that walk closer to the street? As, I'm sorry, the walk closer to the creek, as it's been proposed by the developer?
I don't have a clear picture, and I have an engineering mind, but I don't have a clear picture of the cross-section and how it functions. That trail functions right now with the proposed working only one side of the creek. See that diagram right there?
So which is close to the creek, but in, again, I think this comes back to Mr. Rosler's comment. In your diagram, it's, your path is way over here to the right.
Correct.
So would there be any issue or any issue or problem moving that path closer to the creek as what's been proposed?
No, as long as it's within, as long as it's not on the side of the slope and gives the...
No, as long as it's within, as long as it's not on the side of the slope and gives us as trail walkers the view of falling down in the creek.
Right.
Yeah, let me interject.
Balance here, you know, but no, we wouldn't object.
Okay.
Yeah, I think commissioners, maybe with this brochure, you're getting a little too hung up on the exact location of where that yellow line is through the old Mobile Home Park. You know, the intent of this yellow line in this brochure through the Mobile Home Park is not to depict an exact location of a trail, it's just to show connectivity from Wildwood through the trail. And correct me if I'm wrong, Brooks, but it's just to show that there is connectivity and, you know, it's all wide open through that property. And it's not the conservancy's property, it's the city's property, so.
City's property. If we had a choice, use the current park driveways.
You know, a creek-side trail is what makes sense. No one's going to, no one's going to say, throw that trail down the middle of the apartment complex, okay?
Just to clarify, we have a policy in our general plan and then the downtown specific plan to put the trail adjacent to the creek, so that's the direction we gave the applicant.
That works. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conley, once the dust settles, will the property that the retention basin sits on, will that still remain as city property or, yes?
Yeah, the detention basin, and there's an exhibit that shows the property ownership here. So, the blue areas, including the creek and the basin, would retain, the city would retain ownership of, and the yellow areas would be transferred to the developer.
Okay. Just got a late-breaking speaker slip. Pat Wise, please. Ms. Wise, state your name and give your address, please.
Pat Wise, 676 Bellard Drive. I'm scared. You just showed a picture a little while ago about the levels of the houses, and they went by the houses on the north side, and they're higher up than what he claimed were apartments. Those are condos that we own. We're concerned about our property value. We're right in the middle there, the red tile roofs, over to the right, right there. Those are condos that are individually owned. Now, we set a lot lower than the houses. Are we going to be sitting there looking into people's bedroom windows? We have a concern about that, the sightline, because we are a bit lower, and that end of the Mobile Home Park is higher. So, what are the sightlines going to be?
That's what we're asking, too.
Yeah, and he kept saying the houses, that these were apartments. They're not apartments, they're individually owned condos. We're worried about our property value. Also, is there going to be a fence along this whole east side of the property to keep people from coming up on those slopes and ruining the slopes, basically?
We will find out.
We're really concerned about that, too. And the density of the thing is another concern, but that's all I wanted to say, is that those are privately owned condos, not apartments.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. The elevation approximately of where the condominiums are is about 420 on the map here, and the finished pad elevations below are around 367.
So, 367 plus 37?
Right, is where the tops of the roof would be, so you'd still be below the pad elevation above by 15 or so feet.
Great, perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Bell, please.
Thank you. For the city, do applicants like this do story polls any longer? Is that something they do?
We do not have...
Why are you laughing?
This is a...
I'm laughing at this, in case anyone saw.
No, I'm sorry. The commission, just for Mr. Bell's information, the commission brought this issue up last year before you were on the commission.
I got that.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't had a requirement for story polls before. The commission did ask that we look into it, which we did, and the council asked us not to take it any further based on the cost and difficulty of doing it.
And it sounds like with technology now, we can do a pretty good cross-section and show a view without difficulty, so we'll save comments to the end, but I would encourage the applicant to look at that to satisfy concerns.
Next, we'll move on to architecture. Commissioners, comments, questions regarding architecture. Mr. Rossler, please.
Mr. Rodriguez, would you join us up here for a second? My concern is, first of all, I like the architecture. I think you've done a very good job. There's lots of penetration, lots of movement, except for elevation two of building type two. Do you have that in the slide presentation, that architecture?
We can, we can look at the plans. I don't know. I think it's 38, page 38 is 68 in the staff, in the staff report. Yes, I'm looking at it right now.
There it is, that one, elevation two. If I understand the site plan correctly, that's the elevation that's going to be facing the Rancho, and I definitely believe it needs to be enhanced. I would leave that to you to how it gets enhanced. I would add, at the minimum, I've looked at the floor plans, and you could put a bedroom window in there that would help, but that's a pretty plain elevation to be facing our crown jewel in this city, so I would ask you to enhance that elevation.
Sure, yeah.
To make it look like the rest of them.
Well, we'll take a second look at that. There's, there's a lot going on there with the stairs, and I think that would add enhancements as well, but I understand your point.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. I, too, like the project overall a lot. Thank you. I'm kind of haunted, though, by what appear to be just miles of garage doors facing each And I don't know how you get around that, but...
I can, if we can show the site plan, I can show you how we minimize the effect of those garage doors on, at least to the main entrance into the project and also as you circulate around the project. So, if you see the main drive as you come down on where the parking stalls are, okay. There you go. So, this is our main drive here, and what you're looking at, when you look at the buildings, are the facades without garages. But we do have to have motor courts, and they're located in here, in this, these areas in here, and they're concealed from the pedestrian links that you see along here, along here in this courtyard as well, and of course, minimizing the impact on the main driveway. So, we did give that a lot of thought and try to close, create these cloisters of motor court areas to minimize their effect.
Okay, I see what you mean by the separation from the pedestrian sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Garretson, please.
Access from the garage to the apartments is through the front of the garage?
Yes, where it's possible, we do have access, direct access to a garage.
I looked at a couple of those, and it seemed like one here and one here, but it's like one out of six or eight has access to the inside, the rest of them to the outside.
Yeah, there's some access to the corridors as well. When we have a garage adjacent to a corridor, we'll take advantage of that so people parking in those spaces can walk directly into the corridor and then access their unit. So, every opportunity that we can find, we'll try to get direct access.
So, for the most part, you drive in your, in your garage, shut the door, and is there a pedestrian door?
Yes, for those units that have access, yes.
I'm talking about the ones that don't have the pedestrian access through the front. How do you get out of the garage?
They'll have to go through the garage door and then walk around the building to their unit.
So, they wouldn't have a pedestrian door, they'd just have a normal garage door that they'd have to leave open until they're...
That's correct.
Until they're out, and so they're getting out with groceries and, and I assume there's a sidewalk there or a walkway, so if somebody's coming out of those garages with bags or groceries or little kids, there's a safe way for them to get out of the garage to their apartment.
Yeah, unfortunately, you're not going to have direct access to every unit because many of the units are going to be on the second and third floor, and that's how they would have to, you know, maneuver and navigate to their units.
So, are there, are there any of these units, and again, without going through all the prints again, where you have garage on this side and garage on this side, and people are coming out both sides, backing out at the same time, people are running through or walking through?
I think, yes, it would be that condition because obviously, the garage door is there, and there are cars backing out, but that's not an unusual condition, it's fairly typical. I don't foresee this as being a congested area, so there would be occasions where a car would be backing out and people would be leaving their garage.
But you'd have garage, people backing out from this side, people backing out from this side, cars coming both ways through the driveway, and people walking.
Yeah, we have our typical driveway widths that accommodate the backup space that you're talking about. In addition to that, we have some landscape areas and some distance between the garage and those driveways to add additional distance between the two garage doors.
All right, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we're going to move on to landscape and project amenities. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I think they've done a pretty good job with providing multiple types of amenities. The potential problem I see with it is that it's all on the north end, and there's, it's really disconnected from anything on the south end, but, so I can picture, I guess, people driving from the south end up to the north end and wanting to park here as opposed to being walkable for everybody, but as far as the, I understand, as far as an interest in having aesthetically, having that closer towards the entrance is desirable, but as far as the number and type and quantity, I think they've done a pretty good job. Walkways, okay, I'll wait till walkways for some of this stuff.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll go to parking, driveways, traffic, and pedestrian walkways. Commissioner Carroll?
Okay, there we are. Walkways pertaining to the, what I'm, I guess, assuming would it be an eventual trail connection from the conservancy property to the creek-side portion of this project? I'm concerned about, this trail does get a lot of use, and I think when this is completed, it will get even more use with having, you know, let's face it, it's not too safe down there at the old Mobile Home Park right now, so that's, that probably deters a lot of people from getting maximum use out of this area. But, so I think it's going to be a very popular, busy trail, and I'm concerned about how that's going to interact with this driveway entrance on Townsite Drive. I see on one of the sheets, some enhanced paving delineations for pedestrian access, or pedestrian, showing some pedestrian crossings throughout the project, but I don't see anything like that for the trail right near the, right near the bridge, and I think that's going to be a massive intersection of people walking, biking, and walking their dogs, and cars coming in and out of the project. So, I would really be interested in seeing some, some type of delineations, whether it's, you know, on the paving delineations of different types, signage, traffic calming. I don't know what to do there, but I'm concerned that, and maybe it's something, doing something on the street portion and on the trail portion of trying to really make that a safe intersection of pedestrians and vehicles. And, okay, so, the, the city have just recently completed that section of trail from Ponderosa up to Bringle Terrace Park, and it's a great connection, fun bridge, but it's very narrow, and it's probably a right-of-way issue at that point there, but that, I think, is a good example of, of a narrow trail that we, we don't want. I don't mean it like that, John, sorry.
No, but I understand the reason there's a six-foot section there is because the creek was too close to the property line to make anything bigger in that one area.
Yeah, you had some constraints there, for sure. So, what I'm getting at is, I'd like to see a wider trail. It's, I think, called out as an eight-foot trail here, and as one of the commenters posted, residents commented, you know, eight-foot, it sounds like a lot, but it's really not. If you've got a couple of people walking their dog on one side, and somebody else walking the other way, and a couple of bikes going through, it's, it's really not, not wide enough, in my opinion. So, I would, I'd be interested in seeing that widened.
We don't have a city standard, we, well, there's a, there's a reference in the general plan for this trail for an eight to 10-foot wide trail. If the commission wants to see something wider than that, that the trail up directly upstream that the conservancy manages, I believe is a 12-foot, but that's also doubles as a sewer access road further down where the city's improved the property that goes to the park, it's 10 on average, with the six-foot section where you mentioned.
Okay, thank you. And the, the other driveway access, I think they've done a fairly good job of not having too many dead ends. I mean, there are dead ends, but there's also looped connections, which helps, so it helps having that loop, so hopefully, any changes forthcoming would keep a lot of that looping type of driveway connection on the interior.
Commissioner Rossler?
I agree with Commissioner Carroll on the trail width. I think we need to have a 10-foot wide trail section when we, especially when we're in the middle of designing something and have a pretty good amount of flexibility. I would like to see in the, in the final submittal, a detail of the project entrance at Townsite Drive that includes the trail crossing, some type of enhanced pavement. They have it elsewhere in, in the project so that, that we understand how all of that's going to work together. And I think Commissioner Carroll raises a good point. In addition, there are several points throughout the project where there is an enhanced pavement going across drives, and I would like to see those extended to along Drive A where there's intersections with the, with the loop roads. I believe it's B, C, D, just at the intersection, and they could probably do it as part of the traffic calming efforts that they're going to do there, but we'll have to see about that. So, anyway, those were my comments.
Commissioner Garretson?
The two bridges that exist now over there, one is the President Access Road. Will anything be done to that bridge?
No.
That, that is a city property?
Well, it will, the city will retain ownership of it, it will remain in its existing condition. There may be some minor improvements to the railings or something, but it's going to pretty much stay in its existing condition.
And how, how is the trail going to interface with the bridge by the adobe? Because now, I believe there's stairs.
The trail will tie in directly where the stairs are now. I think we may have to look at the location of the gate into the adobe, it may have to shift... to look at the location of the gate into the adobe. It may have to shift slightly. That's something we're going to look at, but it's going to tie in exactly where it is today.
Is there an ADA component to that, as far as the stairs or the possible, or the probable?
It will be raised up to the grade of where the top of the stairs are today. So the trail will tie in at grade.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney, please.
Just one comment that's somewhat related to the landscaping, but just one other item on site. We've got about 900 feet to walk from the most southern unit to the pool. And it might be worth considering, I know it's a, a major change, but to take that central clubhouse and pool area, move it where it's more centrally located on the property, where we can reduce that 900-foot walk to, you know, 500 feet, I think you'd have, I think we would have a stronger project. That's going to be a little bit more user-friendly for the clubhouse, the exercise, and the pool area, where the people on the south end, they will be driving their car to go to the pool. So just a comment.
Good comment. Mr. Connolly, the whole project looks like it is fenced. Is that correct? There's tubular fencing and?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right. Next, we have lighting, safety, neighborhood compatibility, and other. Commissioner Rossler, please.
Under other, I think it would be important, from the comments heard by the commission tonight, that the staff, the applicant, and the conservancy sit down and, and talk. I, I, it doesn't sound like there's going to be any problems, but that, that meeting would be, I think, assuage the concerns of the, of the commissioners that I've heard tonight, so.
Any other comments? Commissioner Garretson, please.
I would just echo a comment earlier about the speed on that, it would be what, the southern side of it, where that main driveway is. I'd be concerned about people going through there, so just echoing something somebody else brought up.
Yeah. I like the project. I like the design. I like what Monarch did in Vista, and had actually seen the, I think it's Marimesa Project. This goes back many years before Vista was built, and that still remains beautiful. And the Vista-Monarch property is, is exquisite. I mean, take that crazy old driving range and really made something of it. So I, I'm very pleased. I'm glad I see that it's gated, because a little concerned that it's, with it being back behind the 99-cent-only store, that there may be people that want to, you know, come take a look and see what's down there. So I'm glad to know that it's, that it's gated for safety. Commissioners, any other comments by you? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. One last question. The, the topic of the parking along the 751 access area was, kind of touched on that it was being discussed and talked about. Is that, does the city have a position on that or idea on what's going to be requested?
So the staff would like to be able to provide public access to that parking lot, to be able to use it for daytime trail use and nighttime resident use. We think that's a good opportunity to have some shared parking. We just have...
It is mixed-use zoning, after all.
Right. And I think as long as the commission is okay with still providing credit to the project as guest spaces for that, that that will work, but we haven't gone through that whole analysis yet.
Okay, keep us posted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, just one comment. The city's development project map, this is number three. So people who want to follow that on the, on the city map and know what's going on there, what stage that's in, I would encourage people to stay in contact with that, and, you know, that's how I keep informed, by looking at that project map on a regular basis. So it's number three.
Okay. Mr. Stone in group, any comments to any of the comments that you've heard this evening?
I think she's asking Ron Stone.
Any deal breakers? I hope not.
First, I want to thank you for your input. It's, we've, I've written five pages. Most of the things you've talked about, I think we can incorporate. I think there's some outstanding ideas. We definitely want to meet with the Vista Conservancy. I want to, I'm going to give him my card, and he's going to give me his card, and we'll definitely get together with him so we can discuss it. We need, on that trail, you know, we're novices when it comes to a trail like that, so any help that we can get, we would appreciate it. As I mentioned earlier, this is a very unusual, unique site, and what we did at Tippodo, we will do the same thing on this location. I think at the end of the day, you'll be very proud of what we've accomplished. So we look forward in working with you and your staff, and thank you very much for the time.
Did you get what you needed from us?
Yes.
Okay.
Very clearly. Thank you.
Student commissioners, any comments from, from you on the project? Please feel forward to step up and give us your opinions.
I think the project is very beautiful, and I am encouraged that they will talk with the Vista Conservancy to talk about building that path for uniformity along the whole path of the Buena Creek, Buena Vista Creek, and I don't see anything wrong with the project.
Thank you very much. Do you have any comments?
I am really impressed with the, of the structure of the project. I fail to see any, any wrong, anything wrong with the project at the moment, though, and I would be more than interested to look more into detail about the, about the trail and the construction of the project as it proceeds.
I, I think that you, you will be pleased, and this was a very good time for, for you to be a student commissioner, with this project being just for an early design review. So this is way, you know, 50,000 feet looking down on something new. So over the next months that you will be here, you will see them come back, and you will see how the, the project is, has changed and developed with the comments. So it's, it's a great experience for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Connolly, did you, did you feel that you got what you needed from us, and?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, with that said, we'll move on back to our agenda. This item is now complete. Commission staff discussion, council actions, and reports.
Sorry, Chairman. I wanted to let you all know that as a result of the cancellation of the Vista Palomar item on the agenda tonight, we wanted to try to reschedule a time where the commission could meet in a special meeting in November. We were looking for the week of the 14th. Either the 14th, 16th, or 17th are the best options for us. The council has a special meeting on the 15th, which takes our regularly scheduled meeting away. In an effort to try to address the applicant's schedule, we've agreed to ask the commission if there would be enough people to create a quorum that week. So I got responses from a few folks. It looks like Commissioner Carroll may have a conflict on the 16th, but I don't know of anyone else. So the 16th looks like the possible date for it, unless I hear otherwise from folks tonight. I'm going to, Commissioner Rossler might have a problem with that.
We have growth group that night. The 16th is Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yours is Wednesday?
Yeah.
Oh, ours is Thursday.
Don't, then don't let me hold it up, okay?
So we'll have a vice chair or a chair.
I'll be here, so, Vice Chair, you're okay.
You're okay on the 16th? Okay, so it looks like we'll have four, at least, maybe five on the 16th, so that, that's going to be scheduled, and we'll send a notice out on Thursday for the public hearing for that project to be on the 16th. I'm sorry? No, this is a public hearing for the planning commission's recommendation. The project ultimately has to go to the city council for approval, but it does have to come through the commission for a recommendation.
Okey-dokey. Let's see what else. Comments? Whoop, just got that. Mr. Stone, any comments this evening? Comments from commissioners? Commissioner Rossler?
I don't know how that got on again. I, I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Bell?
I will say the Vista Palomar people reached out to everyone to ask for meetings. I'm happy to meet with them. I plan on sitting down with them next week or the week after before this. So if anyone wants to do it in conjunction, that's fine, or individually, obviously no more than two at a time.
Right, I was going to say that.
Yes, clearly. But, but I, I plan to meet with them, just so everyone knows and hear what they have to say, and hopefully that makes things efficient.
That'd be a good, good thing, since you weren't here for their early design review.
Yeah. Okay, that is, we are adjourned, 7:42. Thank you.